If you go to Matthew 3, it says, "The baptism of Jesus." "And then cometh Jesus in Galilee to Jordan unto John, to be baptized of him; but John forbade him, saying, 'I have need to be baptized of thee; and comest thou to me.'" I don't think there's a little elect child of God that wouldn't lay that where Paul says, "Oh, wretched man," and I love the fact. He says, "Oh, wretched man that I am," and that's in the present tense. But Jesus answering said unto him, "Suffer it to be so now; for thus it becomeeth us the Godhead, to fulfill all righteousness." And at that point and there, after our Lord was brought forth from the water, you have the Father saying, "This is my Son, in whom I am well pleased." You have the Son right there, and then the Holy Spirit as a dove coming down. All three were represented at that point right there. But what's the very next event that is recorded in the Scripture? And when we were talking last night about the conflict that is sure to come, has come, will be here, and will continue. "Then was Jesus led up of the Spirit into the wilderness, and it is of note to see." Our Lord was led of the Spirit to be tempted of the devil. "And only after, and when he had fasted forty days and forty nights, he was afterward a-hungered. And when the tempter came to him, he said, 'If thou be,' and it is of note that our Lord went to the book of Deuteronomy each and every time, and brought forth the true Scripture.'" See, it says Satan was a murderer, and he is a liar. He was a murderer from the beginning, and he twisted the word of God in the beginning, when he was speaking to Eve. He added to, and he takes away. And if you go to the end of this book right here, it speaks of that, of those that add to and attempt to take away from this written word right here. I think it's of note for every little child of God. You will, you will, you absolutely will have that conflict here, right here, immediately after our Lord was brought forth. It doesn't bring another word until it tells you of the Godhead. The very next thing that happens in this sequence of events, he says, "Suffer it to be so; for it is us to fulfill all righteousness." And then the very next event is our Lord is led up into the wilderness by the Spirit. Never has our Lord ever been led of the devil. He never has. He cannot. They tremble before Him. They know who He is, and they tremble before Him, those evil spirits. They had to ask permission to go into a herd of hogs. They had to ask permission of Him. And here, but look at this chain of events, this sequence. He is baptized, and the very next thing is that conflict that each and every little child of God will have brought to them. This is nothing, like we were talking about, this is nothing but a vessel. That's all it is. It is a vessel. And that old man, when the Lord breathed into Adam the breath of life, he became, he didn't breathe into him a breath of a soul, he breathed into him the breath of life, and he became a living soul from that breath of life, from God. And then that is that corruptible seed that comes from Adam, like we were talking about last night. And then when that incorruptible seed, and there is a birth from above, and I'm getting way ahead of myself, but, and there is a birth from above, at that point, time and there, within that earthen vessel, you have two men. There is that old man who is strong but bound, but very much alive, and then you have that new man, and the conflict begins. And then you see right here, not that our Lord had that old man, but yet right after his baptism, the conflict began. And I, every little child of God, can attest to that conflict that goes on. It's there. It's very real. And Paul laid it out in a beautiful manner. I'm not going to go through Romans 7. But he said, "Whatever little child of God says, I hate it." That's all I have to say, is those three words. He said, "I hate it." The very thing that I want to do, that's not what I do. And the thing that I don't want to do, that's what I do. The conflict that goes on. But our Lord, He brought us forth. He created us. He knows what's here. He knows. And He'll use that conflict. He'll use that conflict, and He'll use it for a purpose that is worthy of Himself. But now let's look at... Let's go to Matthew 4 and then 17. He said, "From that time Jesus began to preach." Now this was after the temptation. "Repent; for the kingdom of heaven is at hand." And that's got to take me right over to where Pilate. He looked at Pilate, and he said, "My kingdom," and what does that tell you? It tells you that he is a king, and it tells you that he has a kingdom. He says, "My kingdom," and then he tells you where it's not. "It's not of this world, both this natural world and the Jewish economy; else my servants would fight; for the kingdom of heaven is at hand." And then let's go to Matthew 5. And what does he start out? The Sermon on the Mount. Now, in verse 3, he starts telling you. We often talk about the attributes of God. We often speak of His attributes, of His grace, and His mercy, and His peace, and His kindness, and just, and the attributes are infinite of our Lord and Savior. But here he gives you the attributes of a little child of God. "Blessed are the poor in spirit." Now, what does he tell you next? "For theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are they that mourn, for they shall be comforted." All of these things do not happen at the exact same time. Those conflicts that it was talking about, that travel from the top of the mountain, and that travel to the valley, and then that travel from the valley, then that travel up to the top of the mountain. "Blessed are the poor in spirit; for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are they that mourn, for they shall be comforted. Blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth. Blessed are they which do hunger and thirst after righteousness," in a spiritual manner. That's what he's talking about, in a spiritual manner. But he'll use that conflict that is between that old and that new. The Lord will use that conflict, but then he'll say, "Blessed are those that mourn. Blessed are those that hunger and thirst after righteousness. Blessed are they which are persecuted for righteousness' sake." And he goes on down through there. "Rejoice and be exceeding glad; for great is your reward in heaven; for so persecuted they the prophets which were before you." Now, let's go over to John 3. And he mentioned that kingdom. Our Lord is having a conversation with a man named Nicodemus. And I know you're all very familiar with this conversation. But if you look at the sequence and the chain of events, it starts off verse 3. "Jesus answered and said unto him," I'll read, "The same came to Jesus by night, and said unto him, 'Rabbi, master, we know that thou art a teacher, come from God; for no man can do these miracles that thou doest, except God be with him.'" Now remember, he was preaching the kingdom over here. That's what he was preaching. "The kingdom of heaven is at hand." He tells you, "The kingdom is within you," is what he says. "And Jesus answered and said unto him, Verily, verily I say unto thee: Except a man be born again; now listen to what must happen to see and to enter this kingdom." He's not telling Nicodemus how, but he's saying what must happen. "Except a man be born again, he can neither see nor, he cannot see the kingdom of God. Verily, verily I say unto thee: Except a man be born of water and the Spirit, he cannot enter into the kingdom of God." So there is one way to see and one way to enter, and there is no other way, for this is a spiritual kingdom. That announcement that he laid out to Pilate, he said, "It is not of this world." But look at the sequence. We have our Lord baptized, and the next thing is the conflict. And then, and then he lays out the attributes of a child of God, those that mourn. And then over here in John, he starts off and says, "For you to see or to enter this kingdom, which is spiritual, there must be a birth, and that birth must be from above." There are two births with every child of God, and only with a child of God, those that were given him from the foundation, before the foundation of this world. Our Lord, our Lord did not take on him the seed of Adam. He took on him the seed of Abraham. That's the seed that he took, that he took on him. And when he called those out of Egypt, he called out the seed of Abraham, and in like manner today, he calls his little children. He pulls them out of Egypt. He shows them, and he backs them right up against. They can't turn right. For there's mountains there. They can't turn left, because the enemy is there, and right behind them is a way of escape. But these natural eyes cannot see it. Only our Lord, our Lord has, he provides that way. And how is that way? He says, "I am the door. I am the way. I am the truth, and I am the life." That right there, and it is a spiritual way, and it has nothing to do with this flesh in any way. He has never needed the hand of any man and any help. He said, "In the beginning God created." He did not take counsel with man. He did not ask for help. He laid those stars out in all their multitude, in all their perfection. And like I've heard John say, I don't know how many times, he's not had to change the brake pad on one planet. He hasn't had to come down and readjust them at all. Not one time. That's the perfection of our God. Just like down there to Greenbelt. That was true. Oh, how true it was. You know, we just had this baptism. Me and it was Kathy and Rita, we walked in there prior to it, and a lady was walking her two grandchildren, I'm assuming, in there. And I told her, I said, "We're going to have a we're going to have a baptism in here about 11:00." And she looked at me and she said, "My dad used to baptize, and he's broke ice on the top of our pond before." I said, "Well," I said, "my father has broke ice, and probably John has too." Now you think about that. Out of all the billions of people, the one lady who's bringing her grandchildren into that pool, her daddy has broke ice, just like my father asked, for her dad to baptize. And when we walk in there, she gets her two little grandchildren out, and she says, "You all play over here." And when we got done, it took us about a half hour. We all went over and said, "Thank you." You know, that's the perfection right there of the God that we've been shown. The God many perhaps have been shown those stars, and they're still sending things out there, and they're amazed at it. And it is amazing. I've seen pictures of them, and I think of those stars and those galaxies, and I think, "How's that possible?" But to be shown a God, and then that this, that this Lord, seeing His Son, manifested Him in the flesh, took the sins of those that were given him, suffered it to be so, despised the shame, was obedient unto death. He says, "Blessed are those that mourn. Blessed are those that thirst. Blessed are those that hunger." He walks us through this life. And then he'll lay doubt in your head. He'll do it. He'll do it time and time again. Paul, Paul, he prayed three times for that thorn to be took away. And he says, "Paul, my grace is sufficient, Paul. My grace is sufficient." He may not have shown Paul those stars. I don't know what Paul seen. But he said, "It's an amazing grace, Paul." We sing that song, "Amazing grace." How sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. That's what you are shown when you thirst and you hunger and you mourn. You thirst after righteousness. That's what he shows you, just how depraved you are and how amazing he is. And when you are shown that, when you see it, and then you walk down this sequence of events right here, there was a baptism. And then he's led into the conflict. And we, and each and every one of us that are sitting here, we've been led into that conflict time and time again. But every single time is for a purpose that is worthy of Himself. Every single time. Just like Nebuchadnezzar. I don't know what Nebuchadnezzar was shown. Those words, they hadn't even come out of his mouth yet. He said, "Oh, how wonderful is this, is my kingdom." The words didn't have to come out, for our Lord put them words there. And he says, "The kingdom took away from you, Nebuchadnezzar." He reached down and he flipped that switch. And he went out and he grazed on grass, and I think that was the works of man. He's seen his works and how pitiful they are, and he grazed on them, and he grazed on them, and he grazed on them, till when that Lord reached out and he finally flipped that switch again. Nebuchadnezzar could not flip that switch. Only our Lord and our Savior can do that. And then Nebuchadnezzar, in one of the most beautiful statements in the Scripture, the first thing that he did, he looked up. He looked up. He had ate that grass, all he could eat. He was sick of the works of a man. And he was shown what he thought was his kingdom was our Lord's kingdom. "He raises kings up, and he lowers them down, and it is at his will. He turneth their hearts as he turns the rivers of water." That's the Lord that we've been shown. And then right here in an example, he shows us, he shows us a baptism, and then he shows us the conflict. And then he tells you the attributes of yourself in that Sermon on the Mount. Then John 4, he tells you how he is worshiped in spirit and in truth. How else, how else could you worship our Lord in a spiritual kingdom? But by but in that way. Let's go to John 5. Now what's the very next thing in this sequence here? He goes to the impotent man, pointing to total depravity. That's the next thing in this chain of events, and I've already hit a bunch of this, but the very next thing is the impotent man pointing to total depravity. You know, John, in Jeremiah 17, he says, "The heart is deceitful above all things, and desperately wicked; and who can know it?" David says, "Shapen in iniquity and in sin." Genesis 6:5, it talks about the total depravity of man. Back in Matthew 5:6, what does he say? "Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy-laden." And what does he say? "I'll give you rest when you show yourself that labor and heaviness laden." Then you go to... Let's go back to Matthew 8. Now, right after the mount, our Lord shows Himself as a deity and as a God. And what does He do? He heals the leper. That's the next thing. He heals the leper in Matthew 8. Matthew 8 and 14, he heals the centurion. Now he is showing, in this sequence of events, he's showing himself as deity, for he was God. He is God. And He's showing Himself in that manner now, in this sequence. He's showing Himself. In 8:26, he calms the sea. In 8:29, it says, "The devils tremble." Then he goes, he go on to Matthew 9, 1, and on down through here, it says that he forgives sins. "Son, be of good cheer," in Matthew 9 and verse 2. "Son, be of good cheer; thy sins be forgiven." Matthew 12, he says, "I am the Lord of the Sabbath, cast out devils." He walked on the sea. He calmed the wind. Now you get to the third part of this sequence over in Matthew 16. And then he begins to tell of his sufferings and his glory. And anywhere you read of his sufferings, you will read of his glory. you will read of his glory that is attached." He can tell you of his glory at times, but anywhere you see, you read of his sufferings, you will read of his glory that shall follow. He says over in... I think it's in John 16. He said, "You believe in God, believe also in me." Then he says, "Tell no man until the son of man be risen again." Then he goes into the garden to pray in Matthew 26. Then here they come to get him. Judas, the kiss of death, is what they call him. They ask if he is Jesus, and he says, "I am." And when he says that, "I am," there's such power in that that it picks up all of the soldiers. It picks them up, and it puts them flat on their back. Peter reaches and pulls his sword, and he's going to defend our Lord. And he took a swing at Malchus, and our Lord said, "Peter, don't you know I can request more than twelve legions of angels? But he must tread that winepress, and he must tread it alone." And then he goes before Pilate in John 19. I'm gonna read that. He says, "Thou couldst have no power at all against me, except it were given thee from above. Therefore he that delivered me unto thee hath the greater sin." Speaking of Judas. But then you go over into Acts 2:23. And what does it say? "Him being delivered by the determinate counsel and foreknowledge of God, ye have taken, and by wicked hands have crucified and slain. But we worship the Lord." He said, "He would be numbered with the transgressors." Many, and they point to the thieves. We are the transgressors. He said, "I did not come for the righteous, but those who are sick." "Blessed are those that mourn. Blessed are those that hunger. Blessed are those that thirst after righteousness, those that have been shown what they are, totally depraved." That impotent man in this sequence of events, and they're hanging upon the cross right beside him, both those thieves were throwing it in his face. "If thou can save yourself, save us too." And then, that spirit moved within that one thief. He moved within him. And he said, and he was shown things that are some of the most wonderful things in my imagination to me that have ever been recorded. He says, "We are getting our just rewards." And that's what a little child of God says within his heart. "We are getting our just rewards." But this man here, there is no God. He has done nothing amiss, and all that thief could say was, "Remember me." And isn't that what every little child of God? When you tuck back, and the Lord blesses you, blesses you, he hands you a prayer, and he walks you back into that little closet. He'll hand you that little closet. It don't matter where it is. He tucks you back, and he hands you that prayer that's always been there. But at the point in time that he sets, he sets the times, and he sets the seasons. And at that point in time, when he hands you that prayer from above, for it will not go back to him void. It will not. And if it is just a little prayer of, "Lord, Lord, remember me." That's the blessings that he hands to his little elect, his little eschique, at a time that he sets. And it will be the perfect timing of an almighty God. That's the God that we have been shown. He is a mighty God.